It rolls into some.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't even know.
Oh, the hard to see that right.
You have.
Oh, yes.
That one has.
Yeah. They all should be different.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see that's why. We call on our. Both. Those both.
And there are part of. There are.
So I. Silent alarm. Has everyone? Have you made it quite? You get sound. So.
Jill, we. Okay. What will need to do this? Well, is it?
You know what they're like? Are you online with that one?
Yes.
Let me check this.
Okay.
They've been.
So John and. Well, I mean, initially. Yes. Okay. All right.
All right. All the meeting to order. Uh, this is the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Spokane Library Board of Trustees. Um, let's see, any visitors? We have a sign up in the back for um, for those that are in attendance, as well as anybody who wants to provide public comment, please um let us know now. So we've been. Call your name in a minute. Time comes around. Then I will start with our uh land acknowledgement. All the Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homelands of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, Chilula Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and carried within its grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respect to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. Maybe learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all those who share this thing. All right, uh, are there any uh proposed changes to the agenda or shall we consider that? Okay. There are no changes. We'll consider it adopted. So the first action item is approval of the November twenty twenty-three board minutes.
I move that we approved in November twenty twenty-three board minutes.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I am.
All right, motion passes. And uh next it is approval of the November for twenty twenty-three thousand contributions.
I move to approve the November twenty twenty-three building contributions in the total of one million two hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I am.
All right, motion passes. And now we have the financial report.
Thank you. Okay, so the uh financial update for November twenty twenty-three for our library operations, first, uh cash investment trends. So as of November, the library has the ability to pay one hundred and eighty-one days of operating costs and available cash investment. That's an increase of twenty-six days since last month. Uh, our levy those dollars were received in early November. As expected, that amount was one million hundred eighty thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars, bringing our cash investment balance to uh just over seven point four million. Uh, for our expenditure trend for operations, the month of November totaled one million ninety-three thousand seven hundred and nine dollars. Uh, of that amount, personal cost totaled uh seven hundred thirty-one thousand ninety-eighteen. Um, other material expenditures that were normally in nature doing the um one hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred and eight for our books and materials, forty-one thousand eight seventy-one in third-party security products, thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven for twirling utilities, and eighty-five seventies for our interfund charges. Any questions on the operations?
I do have a question. So the bar for the expenses in November. I don't, I don't see that on the trend.
I missed that. Thank you.
Okay.
That one's not updated. I I apologize.
That's okay. I just wanted to catch. Try and ensure it. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Right, so for the bond fund, there were no obligations executed in the month of November. Um, November is the last month the interest was earned and the interest did did post early this December and added to our budget, about not much as under three uh three thousand. And final encumbrances are currently underway. We did encumber the um Nevada site project contract that did end up getting awarded to all subcontractors as we discussed last platform meeting. There were um no issues found at found at all. It was a D A R B, a A A responsible bidder. Uh, the required payment and performance bond, as well as the insurance coverages, were uh were shortly there at their completed end and verified. So those all look great. So we've got another two hundred thousand in budgets. Uh, and he's been working really hard over the past couple of weeks to get everything encumbered. Uh, we will have everything wrapped up by this Friday. Which is good. So for business office update, so my team and I spent a large portion of the first week of December conducting interviews for the Republican judges uh position. We did have a total of ten interviews scheduled. Uh, but we did actually make an offer to a gentleman named Richard Stairs. He's wonderful and we're really excited. We accepted that offer and he will be starting in January. So we're really looking forward to to that. Uh, the city did announce uh that the December twenty-second is the final day to have our fund encumbered for twenty twenty-three. So that's why we're wrapping that up uh this Friday. Uh, that that will add, that that will increase our budget as the carryover amounts twenty twenty-four. It's not something that's increased, but it is establishing that budget for those projects for the next year. Uh, and then any items that need to be charged to twenty twenty-three, which is a period thirteen? It's established in the uh period thirteen um in in our FMS system. So basically our our management. And that's open um from January first and that will close on January nineteenth. So that's really kind of our end of year rest to get everything posted in in the uh appropriate year. Um, and then just a reminder to the board, there will not be a financial uh report of the January meeting because of that, that you're exposing that. So then in February, we will have your end financials as well as January financials. So they they have your month. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm wondering about, so the increased threshold authority we did to address contracts under the bond fund during the period of thought. And I'm I'm just wondering if we've checked, is that going to automatically sunset with the conclusion of this period of time when we're encumbering the bond materials? Do we, should we need to take more action?
We do not. Okay. We think it's gonna have to apply to everything that we're encumbering.
Okay, so it'll continue into the next year if we're running out of contracts.
Right, and and there there won't be anything really in charge. We've established all of the projects.
All right, any other questions for Nicole? All right. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you. Okay, uh, and next on the agenda is the chairman's report, and there is no chairman's report. So we'll move on to the executive group report.
Thank you. Uh, well, the big news, uh, city council unanimously put uh the levy measure on the February ballot. Uh, kind of a roller coaster to get there, uh, but that's all in passing. Here we are. Uh, so we're really happy uh about that. Uh, but with public can then decide our our level of funding and service moving forward. Uh, so on that ballot, it will be the two school measures, one levy, one bond, and our measure. Uh, there will also be a vote on uh redistricting, redistricting, uh, so changing the city charter uh to modify that. Don't ask me any questions about that, because I'm not sure uh really what direction that's going in. But those will be the four things uh in front of the voters. So our attention now is really in the public outreach side of things. So we've been contacting uh different groups throughout the city, neighborhood councils, we're co-presenting the neighborhood councils with Spokane Public Schools with our information only uh materials. Uh, and then just contacting different nonprofits throughout uh the city, making sure that they're aware of the measure uh and what its impacts uh could be, whether it passes or fails. So that's been fun. Uh, I've met with Mayor-elect Brown, uh, who was very supportive uh of the levy measure as well. I think that we will have a champion uh with uh Mayor-elect up on our side. I also met with incoming council member Paul Dylan, who will be serving as our new council liaison. Uh, he could not be here today.
He will be late.
He will be late. All right. It will be. Uh, so a really good meeting of Paul as well, uh outlining what our uh long-term issues are around funding, uh really not having a and I'm out set for general bond, uh so I hope to work with him in the coming years to uh get something more stable for us in the future. Uh, mark your calendars for December twenty-second. I think it's around five o'clock.
Right, yeah, doors are five.
Uh, because that's where the swearing in cer- the swearing in ceremony will be at the Central Library uh for uh Mayor-elect Brown, as well as uh the council member from Northwest Spokane, Kitty Pitsky. So uh that should be awesome. We're honored to have them there as uh a community space uh for uh their swearing in.
What time is that at, Andrew?
I believe it's five. The these, when I open up doors at five, five-thirty is when the program starts.
And our uh writing education specials, charm shows will also be reading uh as part of the ceremony. I know that there will be musical groups and all sorts of uh entities from the community coming in and as part of the pretty cool. Uh, for our uh D E I efforts for twenty twenty-four planning, uh we're looking at booklets, uh different topics that we're looking to include, uh include loneliness, uh issues of race, class, indigenous perspectives, uh intersectionality of climate change, and refugees and immigration uh issues. And so we'll be finalizing that list uh in the coming weeks. Also note, uh, we recently launched launched access to the Palace Project. This is a new uh e-materials platform uh for folks. It's actually funded by the State Library through twenty twenty-six. Uh, and you can get ebooks, the audiobooks. I saw some comic books on there as well. Uh, pretty good mix of collection, not as expansive as Overdrive, but it does offer many different options for customers as far as a deeper collection for us. And as far as staffing goes, uh, we welcomed a new team member, Chris Brown, into our technology team as our full-stack developer for Folio, which is again the backbone of our of our customer and uh our material system. Uh, and this is a position that was partially funded by the Washington State Library and EBSCO. Um, they both have interest in the development of Folio and their leading resource behind it. So uh we're glad to work with them on that as well. It puts us further along and it puts the library community further along with this open source product as well. And our star of the month for November, that's a typo in the report, uh went to Molly Coffey and Tony Etter uh for listening to a concern uh from our staff and implementing a quick solution that's going to get materials out and save time uh throughout the customers faster and save time for staff. So uh thank you to both of them. Any questions for me coming?
Yes.
How far advanced will we be putting young employees, the U D I?
The list. Um, I'm gonna turn to Amanda for that. We put out a survey recently, so we're collecting the data on that and we'll probably start up into January, right?
Our first, our first week will probably happen in February, so we'll distribute the books in Jan- anywhere in this stuff in February. We discuss about five books per year and then we watch one to documentaries during the summertime.
We're happy to share the titles. You would trust these as well if you want to join along. That would be great.
Uh, oh, so I also wanted to ask uh on the the Palace Project, the State Library's funding, uh, are we anticipating that 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 would go away then in twenty twenty-six? We need to fund it ourselves? Or are we thinking State Library is gonna continue providing it to the Washington libraries generally?
So I think we're in a, yeah, it's, we're kind of in a wait-and-see. So the Palace Project's intention is really to test, to be a disruptor in the market. Um, you know, there there's such a overdrive has their claw, you know, really are are in around what the options are. And publishers are really beholden to um uh really not beholden. They really favor models that are not favorable towards library. So this looks to be a disruptor in that environment, and I think the State Library is funding it to 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 show that it can be successful. Um, but I think that we're just kind of a wait-and-see. Is this actually gonna be? Yeah. Yep.
All right, any other questions for Andrew?
This is, the Palace Project is actually the, I believe it's the only digital product for downloadables that we are able to be a part of. Uh, there are other consortiums out there for like overdrive that smaller libraries can be part of. We're just too big uh according to overdrive.
That you would actually be able to like contribute content to?
Uh, you could contribute funds to like later on as part of a consortium um where you could have some shared collections throughout the state, uh which poses its own problems. Um, but uh we've just the 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 nature of our size and population, uh we've always been Xed out of any sort of consortium in this state. Um, which is different, because when I was in Arizona, we had a huge consortium um for Mayor of the County, uh and uh overdrive seemed to be able to handle that just fine. So it's all market decisions.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, and now uh next on the agenda is the council liaison report. Paul has not joined us yet, so. To the communication department.
Okay, uh, so I I brought some items for you. We launched our play space passports. Um, this has been a longstanding goal of ours. Again, we have all these wonderful play spaces. We wanted to make a fun and interactive way for kids to visit each of the spaces. Each library has a custom stamp um of the character at that library so that when a child visits that library, they can get the stamp um and then they can collect them all. So and had some fun activities in it as well. Uh, where, thank you. Yeah, we're really excited about it and a lot of people have been picking them up already.
Good.
Yeah. Um, we've started promotion of the library kiosks. As you know, we've installed two of those, one at Latah uh at the Yokes and one at Logan at the Gonzaga Family Haven. Um, the one at Gonzaga Family Haven has the wrap on it already. If you haven't seen that, it's really great wrapped. Um, illustrated by a South Hill artist, Danielle Davis. Um, and so those are looking really good. Hopefully the Yokes one will be able to be installed soon. It is temperature dependent. They can't install vinyl like that when it's too cold, so they've got to wait until there's a a warmer window to install that. Um, but that hasn't stopped us starting to promote that and putting it in our newsletter. We'll be planning some other campaigns, including some grocery bag inserts for the Yokes location, as well as direct mail mailers to visit codes that are most likely to use those two locations. Um, I also brought examples of the information-only materials that we have created. We have bookmarks and postcards. Those will be in branches after the new year, as well as uh large twenty-four by thirty-six posters right as you walk in each location. So when you visit, you know that something's coming up for us. We also have been including it in all of, we will be including it in all of our upcoming newsletters. We included in the one on Monday. Um, and it's on our website. So information is out there, starting to circulate, and Andrew and I have been presenting at the neighborhood councils as well. Uh, and then we had a great event over the weekend, Wonka Candy.
Carnival.
Candy Carnival four hundred um families came to play life-size candy land, make chocolate bars. Um, and I would attribute a lot of that to Skyler's. We're promoting it. We even decided not to do a press release at the last minute because we were afraid too many people were coming. So um it was a very successful event. Uh, and the Be Your Best self campaign is also still running. Uh, we have, as of today, over two hundred thousand views on YouTube. So you'll see our YouTube views are really spiking up because we're paying for views of that um through YouTube advertising. We also now have our Spotify and Hulu ads live. So if you don't have paid Spotify or Hulu, watch for those and listen for those um on those two platforms as well. And I know I've heard now that that a few of our staff members have seen them um live in the market, which has always had a fun to see. Um, some updates on our social media. We have been having like bonkers engagement on our social media, and we think it might be, so it's kind of hard to predict what the algorithm is doing for you, but we made a slight strategy shift in not posting all of our events to Facebook. So we were pa- posting hundreds of events and realizing we weren't getting a lot of engagement on those. That's not how people find out about our events. People find out about our events mostly from our emails and newsletter. Uh, and so we stopped, reduced that substantially, and now people are engaging with our other posts more, which makes me think that they're just seeing them more, that they're getting served up to them more. So um we had an extremely successful post about our new yarn swap. It's a yarn crochet fabric scrap swap at Shadle. It's been so popular. People have been so excited about it. We're adding one at Indian Trail in South Hill. Um, and then this was like our second most popular post of the entire year. And then even in the last two weeks, we've had one that's probably our most popular post of all time, um which I'll show you next month, but it's a it's a throwback picture of the Carnegie Library in the snow. So like, it's nothing like particularly, it's something we've posted before, but something about the algorithm is favoring us better now, so. Um, Instagram, same. We've got that really great post about the yarn swap and the kiosk. We're posting about that now. On TikTok, uh, our our top post on TikTok was also about the kiosk. So getting the word out there, people are starting to get engaged on that. I mentioned, we'll see a higher view count on YouTube. You'll see ninety thousand here on this report for YouTube. And then again, that's because we're paying, paying to get it in front of people. Um, and finally, I'll just point out though, the earned media, the uh Central Library was the backdrop for a really cool photo essay of the um high school sports previews. So there were wrestlers, basketball players, gymnasts posing within our library, and they published that in the spokesman review. And then uh Teach Me How to Archive was a feature in the Inlander, and it's a really great segue that Dana is going to be presenting later on about our archives that are inland Northwest Special Collections and that article in the Inlander. Um, highlighted some of Dana's work that she's been doing. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
All right, questions for Amanda? I think that sounds good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just sort of there. What's a yarn swap?
So it's a, it is a bookshelf where library employees have supplied some old yarn that they're not using anymore. Maybe they had remnants from their projects, some fabric, different things like that. Then people can come, take yarn and leave yarn um for the next person. So if you have, if you've finished a project and you have remnants, but you need some pink yarn and you have blue, you can come swap and exchange and trade yarn.
Is there a limit on how many yards of of yarn that you would be able to walk away from or?
I think it's pretty, you know, first come, first served. I I would hope that people are using, you know, being generous and not taking everything that's there. Um, and also leaving something behind if they do take something similar to the little free libraries, right? You can take a book, you can leave a book. Some days you might just leave a book, some days you might just take one.
I mean, that was the model that I, yes.
Yeah.
And Lisa Cox, whose idea this was, is sitting there right in the back, so we have her to thank for this.
Nice job.
Did we do something like this with quilting as well? Did we, am I making that up in my head? I am on my. It's happening.
I believe so. The it's yarn, but also quilt, like fabric, material, fabric straps, that sort of thing. So, but I don't know that we've done one in the past.
Okay. But currently, I think there are quilting squares there. For their work, when I checked.
Because there's a little puzzle swap, because you know how to puzzle swap also for a while.
Yep.
Got puzzle.
Not really after?
Yeah.
And we also did a blast swap.
I remember.
All right, so uh now we'll move on to the program report. Could you?
All right, November this long month, only two hundred and ninety-two Thanksgiving, which is actually down quite a bit because we didn't program any children's programming in the week of Thanksgiving, so we retired. Um, I ran it up the exact, I did, I thought this was a typo, exact same attendance for adult program and storytime, so now seventeen thirty-two. I checked it three or four times. But the value score of this one went up to eighteen point four nine, shut to seventeen point four. Last month, uh, we had adjusted some scoring for storytimes, kind of maybe wait for that. Also, this month, you'll see on that chart, there's only three things that bottomed out at the Z, which is one of three things that nobody came to, which is last month, there were quite a bit more that just, we had zero people show up. Um, some of the top things, the three top things on there, um, was we partnered with a group of organizations to host a Transgender Day of Remembrance, again, at Central. A hundred and thirty people showed for that. Partner for the Grass Root Project, Second Annual Grass Root Project, which is with some organizations around um Black Baby Awareness Month. And uh, there's a huge turnout for that, too. It would be a great uh presentation. At the thirty-three artists market again this year, at the High, which had seven hundred and forty-five people come to it. And that was a little time. And that, I, well, as requested, um, there's some definitions of the terms. I kind of reposted the kind of explanation of the whole process there. And then you'll see on that chart, anything that has a red number on the chart is ones that have performed higher than expected. Below the the bottom. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, thank you. All right, now we are ready for new business, and um the first item is the twenty twenty-four assurance renewal.
Thank you. Okay, so our twenty twenty-four business insurance policy. So our current and uh business policy is held by Spokane Public Library, our sets expire December thirty-first of this year. Um, the ones that expire are our main one that we care, have to carry year-over-year with property and equipment, prime, general liability, auto, umbrella, and employment practices. And then in May, uh, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the workplace violence will expire. That will be renewed here. The site pollution one is uh in a two-year policy, so that will not be renewed in twenty twenty-four. So that's an FYI. Uh, we've, uh, over many years, we've built a really great uh relationship with the E P at Hub International. His name's Tom Wilson. This absolutely stellar work, uh, working with, with Goizy Church. We get really good pricing. So the insurance, let's see. Uh, just just to mention, so the December thirty-first, twenty-three policies that expire, the uh increase on that from twenty-three to twenty-four, one of four point two percent in uh increase in price, which is less than than we were anticipating. And then the workplace violence policy, uh, that had increased by eight percent. Um, so overall, we had twenty-four renewal costs of one hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Um, uh, sometimes throughout the year, there are, there are un- undervalued additions or deductions. For example, something happens to the vehicle, we got three people, we're getting credit or have a a small amount that we have to pay. That's really it. Pretty straightforward. Um, oh, I do want to also mention, um, our the our deductibles for each current have been five thousand uh for for a very, very long time. However, for the twenty twenty-four uh renewal year, our deductibles for the central building, the south building and shadow building will be ten thousand. That was doubled. That's because our our um values that we're ensuring are over ninety million dollars in in total. That's that's one uh uh state significance of change. So we're gonna see others and that is all the exact same. Do we have any questions about meeting sales?
Um, so is the, so I noticed you were talking about the increase and four point two doesn't sound too bad generally. Um, but the but the dollar value is down. Is that because we're not paying for the site pollution that six thousand covers both both years of the period?
Were any of the increases in any of these as a result of experience or was it just an overall?
It's an overall increase because of the inflation. Originally, you know, it was told it could be between five and 10%, so it's not too great. But it was 4.2.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are you, any other questions for the poll? All right. And turn the, entertain a motion to approve binding the insurance coverage to 2024.
So.
A second? All right. It's going to move in sync again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? During none, no objections. All right. Next item we have is the 2024 Board Meeting Location, who's that?
Arms cry. So in front of you, you will see the schedule of our 2024 Library Board of Trustees meetings. It was advised by City Legal that we run this past all of you and gain your approval before we send it out to the community, just to spread awareness that babies are happening at different locations. So the motion is to gain your approval of the schedule as shown at the locations represented.
So moved.
Thank you.
And seconded, is there any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? During none, motion passes. Thank you, Scott. All right. And now we have the Inland Northwest Special Collections presentation. We shut nowhere to anyone who was on stand.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me today for meeting. My name is Gayna Bronson and I'm the Archivist and Special Collections Librarian. And I joined Spokane Public Library back in April of 2022, just a few more months before Central reopened after the renovation. And while I was born and raised here in Spokane, prior to this position, I spent five years working as the archivist at Whitman College in Walla Walla. And then before that, I worked at the John F. Kennedy Presidential Library in Boston. But I'm really happy to be back in my hometown. So for those of you who are newer to the library today, I just wanted to welcome and introduce you to the Inland Northwest Special Collections, which is located on the third floor of the Central Libraries. And then for those of you who are not new, I want to welcome and reintroduce you to the Inland Northwest Special Collections, formerly known as the Northwest Rooms. And we're often the first stop for local history research in Spokane as we house thousands of non-circulating materials, including books, clippings, ephemeral files, historic maps, city directories and more that help tell us about the history of Spokane and the region. And in addition to these materials, which are housed in our reading room, our manuscript and rare book collections are stored in our vault on the second floor of Central. So you may wonder why the library has illuminated manuscripts from the 12th century or papyrus leaves from a 4,000-year-old Book of the Dead. And the answer to that lies with George Fuller, Spokane's first city librarian, who wanted to model our library after European libraries, which frequently cultivated special collections as part of their mission. He's thought controversially, dedicated a very significant portion of the library's collection budget toward purchasing rare books and other special items, creating what we now refer to as the Fuller Collection. And while we can thank him for leaving us such a rich collection of materials that the public can access, I know he would not be thanking me for being the current steward of this collection. Because in one of the few surviving records he left behind, he indicated quite strongly that women working in libraries should be classified among the enemies of fine books, along with fire, pestilence, dampness and worms. Next slide, please. So when I'm not destroying a rare book collection, as Fuller knew I one day would, what exactly am I doing? What are we doing? So I like to think of an archive as kind of a mini library, as I'm often carrying out all the functions that different departments do. So when I'm not on our reference desk in the reading room, I'm cataloging, processing and preserving materials, doing programming and outreach, digitizing or working on our policies. And of course, none of this could happen without the support of the many people throughout the library, but I do wear a lot of hats each day. So now that we've talked a little bit about what the Inland Northwest Special Collection is, I want to pivot and talk about our patrons. So the word special is often included in the name of archives as in Inland Northwest Special Collections, signaling to people that these items are different somehow, more precious, more rare, more something. And while this specialness can work for us by intriguing people to come discover what we have, it can also work against us by making the public feel that they're not encouraged or allowed to use our collections. Maybe they don't feel they're special enough to come open the door. We carry a responsibility to provide what one archivist has coined a radical welcome. How can we make sure that our patrons know that they're welcome care? It's often in the words we use, the policies we have and the judgments we make. It used to be a policy in this library, one that is still technically on the books, but we are trying to remove it. And that you had to be a qualified, serious researcher in order to see anything from the vault. This involved an arduous application process with multiple academic references required weeks in advance of a visit to the library. You even had to prove that your research project was serious enough to justify seeing the collections. That doesn't sound very welcoming, does it? It's vital to consider how these things can create a sense of distrust before someone even steps into the archives because we really shouldn't be evaluating whether or not someone is serious enough to be welcomed in. There can be a perception of archives as insular, static and associated with the library's past rather than its future. But I want to reframe that for us and think of it in the present tense as a place of public engagement in a space of active, open endeavors. It's important to feel like you're part of something larger and more lasting than the moment, something that stretches both backward and forward in time. And archives can serve as that repository memory. They can help people recognize what is special about their own lives and communities. I hope to never lose sight of the feeling of joy that a first-time visitor experiences when they see an old map of the neighborhood they used to live in or a photo of a relative or a copy of a book published in 1493 that we have. People don't need to be a scholar to receive a radical welcome, to view the most precious and exciting items in our collection. By dismantling these rules, expanding our hours and encouraging patrons to actually open the door, we've seen a lot of enthusiastic use of our collection as reflected here. So since March, we've had 784 researchers come in. I've answered over a thousand reference questions in person by email and on the phone. I think it's important to note that 84% of our visitors are local. So people from Spokane are coming and engaging with these materials. And 62% of these interactions take more than 30 minutes of my time. So these are kind of sustained, ongoing relationships that I'm building with these researchers. And then 25% use those vault collections that we have. I also think it's worth noting that based on the records that I have, between 2005 to 2020, so 15 years, there were only 86 times that patrons were allowed to view items from the vault. Since March, that number has been 300. So if we're getting technical, that's about a 5,000% increase in annual usage of the collection. And just to note that these stats only go back to March because I was on maternity leave for the first part of the year. Next slide, please. So I feel that we have a great responsibility in the Inland Northwest Special Collections to the residents of this city and region to help preserve, interpret and make accessible their history. And one of the ways we're engaging in a dialogue about why culture and history matters is through an increase in public programming. Alongside our writing education specialist, Sharma Shields, who also works with me in the reading room, we lead several monthly programs where we bring up items from the vault centered on a topic and invite scholars, writers and artists from the community to speak about how they've used our collections as inspiration for their work. We've also been stepping up our partnerships with local schools, colleges and universities. And just in the past couple of months, we've seen classes from Spokane Montessori, a visual storytelling class from Eastern and over 80 students from Gonzaga's first year honors class. And I'm also right now working on a collaboration with the MAC to lead a Teaching with Archival Sources workshop centered on materials from Expo 74 for Spokane Public School teachers this spring. So I feel really strongly about the need to provide a radical welcome and let everyone who visits know that they are special enough to view our materials. This is part of what makes it so special to have an archives in a public library because there are essentially no opportunities for most people who are not scholars to be able to freely see and interact with the type of materials that we have. After all these collections belong to the public, we're just keeping them safe. Thank you so much. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
How are the different factions in the years to go through all of these, these events from Expo? Because we've been dealing with a lot of that ourselves. We have our own archival material and I would imagine that we're not the only ones that have our own proprietary portions of that year. So tell me how the library can fit in with those or be over and above.
Sure. Just in terms of what we're doing with Expo partnerships? Yeah. Well, we're working with a couple of different organizations on projects. And we're going to be doing our own exhibit, but Vanessa Strange is going to be leading up. And we're also partnering to do a kind of Chinatown Revival Festival, the weekend that's opening of Expo 74. So that's going to be really exciting. And then this partnership with the MAC that I'm doing, they're kind of doing a really massive exhibit. They're the final repository of all that records from Expo. So they're going to kind of have the most activities centered there. But we're hoping to get the public school teachers engaged and be able to bring kind of these modules back to their classrooms to teach students too. So I think right now there's just a lot going on around the city with Expo. Yeah.
Any other questions for Dana?
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Dylan, are you online with us?
I am. Yeah. Thank you so much. I'm really sorry I can't be there in person and I was late, but it really is an honor to be here. I'm on dad duty tonight. Got my seventh month old here with me. So watching over her. Hi. And we both love, love our libraries and she agrees. And really, really excited to be here. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Welcome and thank you for joining us. And we look forward to having you join us in person in the future. Bring the baby. You can always bring the baby.
I will, I will definitely bring the baby next time. Does that sound good? Yeah.
All right. Excellent. So we will move on to our last agenda item, which will begin with an executive session to discuss review of a public play. And what, 10 minutes? I think 10 minutes. Is it sufficient for the evening session? So. We will return at 5:23.